I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Palm Coast Virtual Special Counsel Meeting. As stated earlier today pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order suspending all Florida statutes that require a quorum to be present in person at local government public meetings or require a local government body to meet at a specific public place, the city may conduct meetings of its city council without having a quorum of its members present physically or at a special, specific location and utilizing communications media technology such as telephonic or video conferencing as provided by Florida statutes. As Mayor pursuant to the authority granted to me by the city charter, I declared a public emergency on March 15, 2020 in response to COVID-19. Furthermore pursuant to the, those powers and the Governor's Executive Order, I suspended all city requirements that require a physical quorum to be present to conduct this meeting and authorize that this meeting be conducted by communications media technology under the city's State of Emergency Proclamation for virtual meetings executed on April 3, 2020. The city manager pursuant to the authority granted him by the city's initial State of Emergency for COVID-19 has closed City Hall to the public. Therefore, no member of the public will be allowed into the community wing of City Hall during this meeting. Access to this meeting is being provided by live stream to the city's website at www.palmcoastgov.com and by calling 386-223-1690. Should you need technical assistance, please call 386-986-2391. Please join, please rise and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Great. Okay, we'll open it up to Agenda Item Number D1, which is Discussion on Counsel Vacancy Procedure. So are we going to hear from our city attorney tonight?
Well, I can introduce it. I know Virginia's been working furiously over the last several days to try to get all this in order, so I don't want to steal her thunder, but as you have seen in the Agenda material, last Thursday unfortunately we received the announcement from Councilmember, former Councilmember Howell that due to health issues, he needed to protect himself and his family and he resigned. So that triggers that process and that was effective last Thursday. And what that does is that triggers a section in our charter that we have to do several things. The first of all, the first one, which I'm just going to highlight and then I'm going to pass it over to Virginia because she's been working long and hard and has a presentation on this first step, is that this council within 30 days from the occurrence of the vacancy, by majority of the remaining four of you, have to make an appointment. You have to fill, it's a temporary appointment to fill the temporary vacancy. And we've done this before and so Virginia has a couple of options for you and a timeline and we'll talk about the timeline in a second. And that, and I mentioned the word, the adjective temporary because that's important because the charter specifically says that this is just for a period of time until the next regularly scheduled election. And so we're going, we'll get into more depth about that, but as you know, we've got a primary in August and then we've got our regular election in November. And we have concluded that legally and from a practical matter, this temporary appointment that you're, that you're going to make within the next 27, 28 days from now will be until, until that election. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I've been, I've been told that it's not getting audio.
I started it, should I start it under the other one Doug?
Was it me?
No, 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 no. We have a technical problem.
Should I go under Workshop?
Do I need to start over?
I just hit stop, so.
You may.
Jeez.
Sorry.
You have your phone?
It's my luck.
Tyler's in the booth on YouTube. Yep. How's that Doug? Yep, it's on now Matt.
That has shipped.
We're good.
It has, very good.
All right.
Want me to take over?
Uh, no.
Okay, Bob, we can hear you.
Is someone talking? Okay.
So as, I'll continue.
Sorry, I thought I was muted.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we will restart the Discussion on Counsel Vacancy Procedure, Agenda Item Number D1, since we've gone through the first three items on the agenda, which would be the call to order, Pledge Allegiance, and roll call.
Mayor, Council, Bill Reichman, City Attorney, as I was saying, let me try to summarize as quick as possible, last Thursday unfortunately the city received an announcement from Councilmember Howell that for health reasons, he needed to resign his seat as the, in District Two Representative. And that triggers a process that is set forth in your charter to fulfill a vacancy. And I think it's important to understand that the reason that this process is being selected is because there is more than half, there's more than two years left in Councilmember Howell's seat and position. And when that happens, the first step in the process is, is this council has to make a temporary appointment, a temporary appointment to fill that seat. This council or, the city's done that before, Virginia's got a presentation on how, the options that are available and what we'd recommend to do that. Again, temporary and it's temporary because the charter then provides that at the next regularly scheduled city election, that vacancy will be filled for the balance of the term. And while we have a, a, a primary election in August, we've been advised by the Supervisor of Elections that there is insufficient time between now or when we receive the announcement from Colonel Howell until that primary election to go through any sort of qualifying period or to get the names to the Supervisor so that they can be put on a ballot. What that means that is, is that the next regularly scheduled election for the purpose of complying with the charter will be the December, excuse me, the November election. And so you have three items today on your agenda that are, that are required legally and for compliance with these requirements in your charter. One, the process for the temporary appointment. Number two, you're going to have a resolution which is going to call for and set the time for the special election at the next regular general election, which will be November 3, so that the voters can at that point in time pick someone that will fill the balance of Colonel Howell's term. Lastly, you're going to, you're going to have for your consideration an ordinance, it's going to be an emergency ordinance and we'll talk about the timing, why we're doing it in this way, but it's an ordinance to set a special qualifying period because we are required under our charter to go through a qualifying for the, for the folks that, and we'll go through the process for that. So there's three actions, temporary appointment, resolution appointing or creating and setting the, the special election on November 3 and then an ordinance, an emergency ordinance to set the qualifying so that we will then, and we've run all of this by the Supervisor of Elections, I know Virginia and my office have been working with them diligently ever since we heard on Thursday about this. So we're very comfortable and confident that Supervisor of Elections is fully aware of what we're promoting and suggesting and recommending today and have her approval to go forward with this process. So with that.
State that, so you mentioned three actions today, but we're not, we're not filling the vacancy today.
No.
We're just talking about the procedure.
That is correct, that's correct. We're just, we're just asking for direction.
Yes.
On that first item. It's just, it's one of the three things that we gotta do. The first one, we're just talking about how to do it today.
Yep, okay.
Thanks Mayor, good clarification.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, as you know, we have a vacant seat for District Two. So what we need to do that we've done in past practice is present you with that process. We will advertise it in the local newspaper, email all past council members and board representatives that reside in District Two, as well as we've obtained a list from the Supervisor of Elections for all the voters that reside in District Two, so that we can capture as many people as possible to solicit if they would like to apply. So we do is.
I would also ask that we email the past Citizen Academy graduates.
Yes, we usually do that as well. I missed that one, I apologize.
Okay.
And again, those are the ones that are in District Two because that's, that's a qualifying. I don't want people to get their, you know, their nose bent out of shape if they heard their name called here, but they live in District One.
Sure. Yep.
So the, the process that we've done in the past is to send out applications and the letters to the former council members, the Citizens Academy graduates and there's these, and that all reside in District Two. Also hit the newspapers, starting tomorrow, I'll send the ad in if this is the steps you'd like to take, so that we can get those underway. The applications would be due at noon on July 24.
Tell me about how we have to just advertise in the newspapers. What is the mechanism for that? Why, why, why are we required to?
We're, it's a practice that we're not required to. The Charter doesn't say exactly what preliminary process that you have to go through. This is consistent with the practices of the city, of the city in the past when we, when you have filled a vacancy on the city council. And as I remember it and the way I would describe it is that the council felt that it would be best to do as much as possible in a short period of time.
I'm just saying, we're limiting, you just mentioned the news Tribune. I'm just saying, can we not advertise in all media outlets?
We can. The newspaper of general circulation is the standard whenever you're dealing with advertising for municipalities. So you have to make sure you're reaching that newspaper specifically.
Okay.
As long as we hit that newspaper, we can obviously absolutely advertise in other media outlets as well.
I would definitely recommend we do that.
Yes.
If we're trying to get to everyone, let's get to everyone.
Correct. Yep. So one of the schedules is July 24th at noon for all applications to be due. The, July 28th, we are holding a special budget hearing meeting and then what we can do is two options, we can shortlist the applications and have them come in and interview after that special budget workshop, or you can decide to go to July 29th through the 31st for those one-on-ones.
Can you take, slow down, hold on, can you go back? There's a lot of information. Can you go back? Okay. Just explain again, can you, all right, going down to July 24th, so you're saying that's, if you advertise here, right, or is that just letters going out?
If you, if I advertise starting tomorrow.
Okay.
And the week after.
Okay.
Then all applications would be due to me by July 24th.
Okay.
I would process them, put them in an agenda. This is where the option comes in.
And what, what, what do the applications include?
The applications are, the sample is in the agenda, it's exactly the same thing that we send out to all of our board members when they're applying to be on the code board, the planning board, fire pension board. So it includes a resume that has to be submitted with it and their history of who they are, what their experience is, what they've done.
We can't curtail it to actually ask for counsel, like why you think you'd be best suited to represent a council seat?
You can add a letter of, of why they want to commit to being the temporary appointment.
Yeah, I just, it's different when you're applying for the planning board. I always look towards specific skillsets of whether you're, you know, an architect or a planner or something like that, but this is a, we want someone who knows a wide range of issues that we deal with on a daily basis that is different every day.
Yes.
I don't know if you remember what we did when actually the Vin, I think it was Vin, Vincent Lion.
Vincent Lion. This is the exact same process.
That's, isn't it? And the only thing is that I even actually applied for the job back then, but due to the fact that I was a candidate, I couldn't, I couldn't apply. So I want to make sure that we probably want to do that clearly, told anybody who wants to be a candidate cannot apply right now because I think, I believe that we're giving somebody else an advantage by being in a job for this month until.
That was, that was just the decision of the council.
Yes, 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 but I'm saying that if that, if that was a decision.
I just want to make sure, I don't think it was a politi, or a legal prohibition, it was just, it was decision, a policy decision by the council at that time, is that there was, they didn't want to have that there was an appearance of preferences.
Exactly. That's, that's what I'm saying right now. I don't know if, before it was transparency and I believe that we still want to be transparent. I don't know if that's something that we ought to consider, informing people ahead of time.
I think so.
It's on the application that's in the packet as well, that we continue that process also.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cuff.
Yes, I was just going to add, I, I think that's a good policy for us to continue. I know that it was the policy that we followed back in 2016 when the seat that I occupied became vacant due to Bill McGuire's resignation. And in that case, the seat became vacant, you know, we had a slate of candidates running for District One as we do now. And I think every one of us that had qualified and was running filled out an application, but the council decided, I think quite wisely, that they weren't going to appoint anyone who was, was campaigning for the job. They would find someone to, to volunteer to fill out the, the period till the next election. So I think that's a good policy and I, if anything, I, I hope when we publish the ads and so forth for volunteers to serve until the election, we make that very clear in the, you know, in the announcement.
We'll add it, absolutely. So there's two options for the, the process for the scheduling is July 28th after the special budget workshop, you can interview the applicants that you shortlist on that day, the following week, if you can switch, July 29th through the 31st, so you can conduct one-on-one interviews and then select on August 4th at the, at the night meeting for the appointment. Or if you desire, you can skip the one-on-one interviewing, interview them at the August 4th business meeting and then make your selection that evening. The appointment has to be made within that 30 days, so it has to be appointed by the August 9th. So the August 4th meeting unless you call another special meeting would be preferred.
Council, I'll, I'll open up for that conversation on which you prefer. I, I mean, you know, again, I, I, I don't need to have one-on-one interview, I mean, I would like to interview the candidates, the shortlisted candidates before the council. They can present at the podium and we can interview them as a collective body and all ask our questions. I'm fine with that.
I am also fine with that, Ms. Mayor. I think, I think that's probably my, my preference going forward. I don't feel the necessity to have one-on-one interviews with a temporary appointment.
Well, this is, the time is of an essence right now, so one-on-one would only delay it. I'm pretty sure that they're going to be doing a good presentation when they come here and tell us why they want to take this position, temporary position, I may add.
Okay.
Councilmember Cuff.
Yes, and I, I was just checking back on the agenda. I'd also favor just doing the live interviews at the August 4th meeting since we'll have an opportunity to create the shortlist. You know, we have, you know, I wouldn't want to interview 20 people at the August 4th meeting, but since it's going to be the, the list we've already had a chance to review and, and shortlist, I don't see any point in one-on-one meetings. And again, I believe that's, not the precedent is everything, but I, I believe that's how it's been done, at least for the last couple of times vacancies were filled by appointment.
Make slide Doug.
Yeah.
So let me just be clear then, are we saying that people, potential candidates for the seats, if they've not filed yet, but this appointment comes in advance of that, because the qualifying period we're going to talk about in a few minutes, but these are potential candidates for this seat or actual?
The qualifying period will, will occur after you make your selection in August. So, so just to say to, to, to Councilmember Quino's point, I don't know if it was different in the past, I can't remember that, but you will have to make your appointment and so the people that apply will, would not have had the opportunity to tell you that they were also running for, for the, for the two-year balance of Councilmember Howell's position. So it would be just something on there. I would, I would submit that you would say, if you intend to run, please do not apply.
That's why I want to clarify that.
Your point is well taken. I was doing the math over here too and, and, and you're not going to, you're not going to know for sure because the qualifying period that is provided for in the next, the next couple of agenda items, as you know, in the ordinance, the emergency ordinance is after August 4th.
Yes. Yep. That's why I wanted to clarify.
Good point.
Yes.
I don't know how else we can do it though. I mean, it, to accomplish that, there's going to have to be some trust.
Well, they can. I mean, if they file for office, that would vacate the seat, right, for the appointment if we say we're not accepting those that will be running for the seat.
Well, at that point, they would have been appointed.
Yeah.
Or we create a document that they sign that once they accept, if they accept it here, they cannot run over that. They have to sign something waiving that possibility.
I'd have, I'd have to look at that. I'm not sure that we did.
See, I don't even, see, I'm not sure either, that's why, you know.
I think Councilmember Cuff wants to weigh in. Go ahead, Bob.
Well, yeah, I, and as usual, I wanted to ask our attorney and our city clerk whether, whether we, I think we can announce the policy that it's our intention to make a temporary appointment and we don't want to appoint someone who's going to run. But can we legally, is there any way to enforce that, assuming we'd want to try?
There is nothing in our charter and there is nothing in, in the election code or any case law that I have researched that would allow us to place, legally place that prohibition on someone who had a, who was appointed pursuant to our charter and then applied to run.
Well, that, that was sort of what I was thinking, so I guess if we're going to do it this way.
I don't believe we ever put anything like that in any of the legislative actions that occurred previously. I'm not, I do not remember that, Mayor.
Always something new.
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, we'll just, we'll just make that note and notice and.
Right. We'll make it real clear.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I have the directions for the appointment process and then now we're going to talk to you.
Advertisements in all media outlets.
Media outlets.
Okay. And we'll have it for, for that district.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right, so that's discussion, you don't need any action, just, this is the direction.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Yes. Okay, Council, no further questions on that agenda item, correct? This is a special meeting.
Yes. You're not really taking any final action on that, so I don't need, I don't think you need to open that up to the public for discussion, Mayor, but on the next two items, absolutely you're going to need to open those up. I, I think I knew where you're headed with that.
Okay.
And I was, hope I'm right.
You are. Agenda item number E2 is a resolution calling for a special election for vacant District Two seat.
And this is the, the second step that I referenced earlier and that is, is that your charter specifically requires that there be a, a, a permanent, not appointment, but selection by the voters for the vacancy that was created by Councilmember Howell's resignation. In order to do that, we're going to have to work with the Supervisor of Elections, which we have done, to call a special election that will be held at the same time as the, the November general election, which is November 3. The way that you do that in your charter is by a resolution. That resolution has been prepared by our office and with the Supervisor's assistance, of course with Virginia's help, and that is for your consideration today. And you will notice that in that resolution, what it does specifically is the, it calls for the, the election to be held on, the special election to be held on November 3. It sets forth a qualifying period in Section 3 and then it specifically indicates how the election and is going to be held, this is in Section 4, Determination of Office. If there's, you know, obviously if there is not more than one, then, and then the seat shall not be listed on the ballot and shall be deemed to be the winner of the seat. If there's more than one, then, then the candidate receiving the highest number of votes cast shall be elected to that office.
And there's no additional cost for doing this, it's on the November election.
We defer your, your city clerk over that.
The only additional cost that we will incur if you choose to call the special election, the Supervisor is aware of it. The only additional cost would be if we push it to a separate page on the ballot, then we have to pay for the cost of printing the English and Spanish version of the ballot for that page.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we push it, I'm just saying.
It depends on how much is on the ballot, whether it pushes to a different page.
Yeah. Well, we have to do it. We don't have a choice, so.
And the part that I love, and, and I'm just doing this for fun, but on Section 4, this is from the Charter, if there's a tie, then we do the coin toss.
And they've done a coin toss twice.
Is that right? I did not know that.
They did a coin toss. When my father's seat was up, was between Tom Lawrence and Stan Dennison, and then they did another coin toss, I believe with Bill Lewis and.
Yes.
And they say that your vote doesn't count. Well, I beg to differ.
Yes, so.
And that's from the Charter.
But the coin toss has been actually.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there was a huge, huge discussion whether it was going to be rock, paper, scissors or the coin toss, but they landed on the coin toss.
Okay.
Okay, so yes, as Bill mentioned, we're looking to hold the special election November 3 in conjunction with the regular elections. Comes with a massive savings. I did get an estimate from our Supervisor of Elections this morning. If we were to hold a standalone election, it would cost approximately $127,000. So this is substantial savings to have it in conjunction. And then we will go into, the ballot due dates are due to the Supervisor of Election by September 4th at noon. Qualifying would be August 31st through September 4th, noon to noon. The petition due date, if we choose to go by petitions, would be August 24th at noon, one week prior to the qualifying date. The Supervisor of Elections has agreed to hold the petition due date verification the week before the election. Normally it is by state statute, oh, 28 days in advance, but due to the timing, she has graciously agreed to one week prior. And then the options for the petitions, we, as you know, this year because of COVID-19, the state issued an executive order allowing electronic petitions instead of having to submit the petition with original signatures. The, we contacted the state, they cannot issue a new executive order or extend this executive order because the qualifying period is over for this election cycle. So the state elections office did provide three options for our special election. This seat requires 150 petitions to be collected. They had suggested to have the candidate do mass emails and have them mail their original signature back to them so that they can submit them to the Supervisor for verification. The candidate can do a mass mailing with original signatures returned to them for verification. Or the candidate could arrange to drop off and pick up petitions from residents for verification. Our cycle that we're coming up with for this schedule would allow them six weeks to collect petitions and submit all original signatures as we have done in the past. The other option to qualify would be to pay the $960 the week of qualifying, noon August 31st through September 4th at noon as well. So those are the two options to qualify, by petition or by paying. The other option we have is to, we do have an alternative ordinance available for qualifying. Council may adopt the alternative one that would waive the fee due to the short time to obtain petitions and due to COVID-19. However, all other qualifying terms would apply as well. So we're giving you two options. They can run with a petition or pay method, or council can consider waiving the petition and the fee to pay to run to qualify due to COVID-19.
What does COVID-19 have to do? We're all doing that. I mean.
Well, what, what happened was before, while the, in the last election, while you still had the inconveniences and the problems associated with going door to door to get your petition signed, there was an exception by special rule that Tallahassee had put out that said that you could do electronically. That was for the last qualifying period. This time, that's expired. This time, that's expired. So the people that want to go out and get 150 petitions aren't going to have that virtual opportunity to go and do it electronically. They wouldn't be able to do it face-to-face, or it would be a lot more difficult. I mean, it would be... You can imagine what some of the things that might happen or what would be said. So that is why Virginia and our office, working with the supervisor of elections, have been trying to, if you will, thread the needle on what the options are for potential candidates and what we require for... What we normally require for qualifying.
Did we just lose the sound again?
I'm sorry, what?
I can't hear it either.
Lost the sound.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
We had a temporary blip with the internet. It's got to be me. Bottom line, Mayor, Council, is that because there is no ability for candidates that seek to qualify to do so virtually, then it can be argued that there is not a viable way for them to qualify by doing just petitions. And the courts have said, if you don't have a viable, realistic way to qualify by petitions, then it is illegal to provide the only basis to qualify to run for an elective office by paying money. The way to solve that would be to waive the requirements for both qualifying by petition and/or by paying money. So it's really a decision for this council whether you believe the situation we find ourselves right now for qualifying, which are those, if you could go back in that slide, Virginia, the three ways that the state elections office has indicated, the three options to collect 150 petitions, whether you deem that to be sufficient as a realistic method to qualify by petitions. Remember now, Mayor, Council, this is all something we've been working on as a one-off since Thursday afternoon. So we are trying to give you as much information and as many options as have been presented to us by the supervisor of elections and the Division of Elections. We did not want to be, you know, just take one of these options and not tell you why.
Maybe I'm going to be too harsh on this part over here, but all these... The people that really want this job, show me how much you want to serve by going through these things over here. I'm not saying that we shouldn't facilitate, okay, by waiving this, what do you call it, the petitions. But if you really want to serve, show me that you're willing to work for it, at least.
I mean, the normal process is if you want to qualify to run for office in the city of Palm Coast pursuant to our charter, you either pay money or you go out and you get a certain number of signatures. It's just now we've got the, you know, the perfect storm with regards to going out and getting signatures. And so if... But there is a way. It's been confirmed by the state of Florida that you can get those signatures. There is a way. And so if... But if you believe that's inappropriate, then it would be wise to go ahead and just waive the demand as an option for the money. I'm oversimplifying, Mayor, but I'm trying to make it clear.
Councilmember Cuff.
Well, I think I understand what Mr. Reishman is saying, and my feeling is, and I think this is sort of tracking what Councilmember Brancino was saying, we need to have some qualification. If we just say, it's a pandemic, you can't do petitions, and if you can't do petitions, we can't require the payment of money to qualify, we're going to have... We may wind up having to print two extra pages of the ballot because, I mean, I don't think we'll get that many candidates, but we could wind up with a large field of candidates, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. But keep in mind that whoever gets the most votes wins because there isn't time for a primary election, which means we could wind up with a member of the city council that was elected because they got 27 votes if we just throw it wide open and we get 50 candidates that want their names on the ballot. So I think if there is a reasonable way, and you know me, I'm not a huge fan of saying, oh, everybody does it electronically, so everybody should be able to do it electronically. But I think providing the option for collecting the necessary signatures on petitions electronically as an alternative to paying the fee is still a good way to do it. 150 people in a city, I don't know how many electors we have, but, you know, it's citywide. It isn't just District 2 that you can collect these from.
No, Bob. Sorry, Bob. They have to collect the petitions from District 2 only.
Only District... Okay. Well, even so, I mean, there's at least a couple hundred people that live in District 2, so if you only need 150, I would favor keeping the petition requirement, but doing whatever we can to facilitate helping potential candidates collect those. It's a shame we're past the virtual petition stage with the upcoming election, but I think just throwing it open to everyone that wants to fill out an application and have their name on the ballot is going to wind up potentially with a very large field of candidates and potentially a city council member that will wind up serving for two years and then be the incumbent, who may only get 100 votes, you know, when you're trying to pick between a dozen, 15, 20 people that want to run for the office. How many votes is any one person going to get? So if our only option is to elect whoever gets the most votes, however many that is, I think we need to have some reasonable method of qualifying other than paying the fee. And, you know, email with return of the petitions electronically or whatever, as long as they can be verified, I think seems reasonable.
Bill, excuse me, Councilmember Cuff, let me correct one thing. They can email the petitions out, but the signature has to be returned to the candidate in original format for verification.
That's fine. I mean, if they can distribute them electronically, I'm certainly not encouraging people to go door-to-door and have any more face-to-face meetings than are necessary in the current situation. But if, you know, if they can be distributed electronically with instructions to return them, who are they returned to? The candidate or the supervisor of elections or you? How does that handle?
It should go back to the candidate, and then the candidate submits them to the supervisor of elections for verification.
Who verifies? So basically, they would email out the same type of petition that I'm sure all of us have signed for other candidates.
Yes.
And the people that receive those would have to sign those and fill them out and return them to the candidate, and then it would be the candidate's obligation to get those to the supervisor of elections to be verified.
Correct.
Is that... Okay. Yeah. Well, it's a lot of work, but I think that's a lot fairer to the citizens of Palm Coast than winding up with a, you know, 12 people in the race and the person elected being the one that managed to get 110 votes or something like that. I mean, I assume the turnout in November will be very high, but if this is the last item on the ballot, a lot of people, I have a feeling, are going to give up before they get there, so...
And so you're suggesting, which I agree with you, you're suggesting the options to collect the 150 petitions, and in lieu, if they are not able to collect it, then they can still pay to qualify.
That's my underst... In other words, if we don't allow a petition option, we can't make them pay.
Correct.
Which basically means we're throwing it open to anybody that wants to send in a note saying, I'd like to run for District 2 city council.
Yeah.
So rather than that, yes, I think that the suggestion, the first suggestion for the electronic collection of petitions makes a lot more sense to me.
And that option, Mayor, is the standard procedure for all city elections under the city charter.
And if they're not open to getting... Going through the exercise of getting the petitions, they have to pay the 1200 bucks?
900 bucks.
Yes.
Approximately.
Who stipulates that, the amount, 960 dollars?
It's in our charter.
It's in our charter?
Yes.
Even if it's just for two years, even if it's for that? Because if it's in our charter, I don't know. Would that make it easier? If we could, if we have the chance of making it like, to the fact that it's only two years, make it four, I mean, or whatever, make it half of the money? I don't know. It's just a thought. If we could, because they're only actually going to serve two years.
But they have an option to run after that.
They do?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I'm talking about this term because they basically... I'm just saying. I don't know. I don't even know if it's possible or what, because...
It would be our recommendation that you follow the charter in this particular instance. The charter is very specific in this instance, and so to our legal conclusion is that if you're either going to allow qualifying as provided in the charter or waive all of the requirements, given the situation. And that was confirmed by the supervisor of elections and by the Division of Elections.
You sure you don't want to go back to a charter review, Bill?
Absolutely not. Now, with that said, Mayor, where we are is we have a resolution that's before you. Obviously, this will be final legislative action, so as you and I alluded to earlier, after our motion and a second and further discussion, we'd need public input.
So Vice Mayor Clufus, do you have any input on which selection?
Nope. I would actually... I'm open to exactly what Mr. Cuff was saying, that there needs to be some type of mechanism in place, and if we follow city charter to keep it at 960 dollars, I think that we would probably protect ourselves from any needless issues that could arise from not following the city charter explicitly. And I'm also okay with the candidate's mass emailing, as long as they're validated signatures, which it sounds like they have to be because they have to be physically returned anyway. So, yep, these are... I'm on board.
Great. Okay. So you have a direction.
We need a motion.
Direction.
For the resolution.
Resolution and then the ordinance.
Motion. Do I have a motion for the resolution? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment, please do so by calling in at 386 223-1690 and hit star 9 to unmute. We'll close public comment. Take it back to this council. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Brancino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number F is an emergency ordinance, number three, so you are going to read that.
Yes, Mayor. It's an emergency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Article 4, City Council of the City of Palm Coast Charter Regarding Qualifying for Office in Article Roman numeral 7, Elections With Limited Applicability to Establishment of Qualifying Dates for the City of Palm Coast, November 3rd, 2020, Special Election Only, Pursuant to Florida Statutes Sections 103605, Subsection 2, and 166021, Subsection 4. This emergency ordinance providing for severability, codification, conflicts, and an effective date. If I could, Mayor, a brief introduction?
Uh-huh.
I would point out that as we are doing this, consistent with the process in 166.041, which deals with emergency ordinances, requires four votes. So everyone needs to vote, and hopefully, they will vote yes. And the purpose of this emergency ordinance is to, and as is required by the Florida Election Code, Chapter 100, is to do the last step, which is to set the, just for this election, special qualifying dates. Because, as you know, the normal qualifying period for the November election has already passed, and we didn't get the resignation until last Thursday. So that's what this does, and it just has to be done as an ordinance because that's what the Florida statutes require. So as you can see on Page 2 of 3, this ordinance does several things. It does what... It has in there exactly what you earlier decided today, which is that to qualify, you're going to either submit the petition or you're going to pay the qualifying fee of 10%. We've discussed that. That's contained in Section 2. And Section 3 actually adds the language that the qualifying dates for this are going to be noon August 31st through noon September 4th. And then Section 4 and Section 6 further clarify that this is not amending your code or your charter permanently, but is indeed just... It's more like a resolution, if you will, Mayor, Council. It's just temporary, but it has to be in the formality of an ordinance as required by Chapter 100, Subsection 3605.
Council, any questions or comments on this item? Councilmember Cuff?
Well, just one question. Given the difficulties of collecting petitions and so forth, I haven't done the math. Is this the... Realistically, is this the maximum qualifying period that we can allow, given the time that we have, or that we can set? Mr. Reishman?
I am going to defer to Virginia Smith, as she was working with the supervisor of elections. I know that the absolute last day for qualifying was September 4th. That's a date that we didn't create. That was a date that came from the supervisor of elections. I'm not sure. I was not involved in the process of picking August 31st, 2020. So I will defer to the city clerk for that.
Yeah. The last day for qualifying will be noon on September 4th, came from the supervisor of elections, so that she has time to print all the ballots, have the early voting session, and then go into the general election on November 3rd.
Right. Yeah. I guess then my question, Virginia, really was the other end of the qualifying period. Where did August 31st come from?
That's the start of...
I mean, other than it's a date on the calendar.
Yeah. It's the start of the week, so qualifying is always given in one week periods. So that's where the August 31st through September 4th came from.
So it'd be just a standard week, like we do for all other qualifying periods.
Yeah. And then the petition deadline is the week prior, July 24th, so it gives the supervisor of elections a week to verify all the petitions.
Okay. So really, then, the issue isn't making the qualifying. My concern was that people would say, look, I got to send these out by email. I've got to go through all of this. It's not possible. But really, what we want to do, if we want to encourage electronic petitioning, is make that period before August 31st as long as possible. So I guess I'm just trying to get an idea of the logistics here, but I'm fine with it the way you're suggesting.
Yep. State statute mandates 28 days prior to the beginning of qualifying, so we've amended that, and the supervisor is in concurrence with it to do just one week prior.
Okay.
Does that conclude your questions, Bob?
Well, you know, we've only got the time we've got. I guess my feeling is, if we have people that are sincerely interested in filling this position, we need to make it as... I don't want to say easy to qualify, but it's feasible to qualify as possible, given the limited time. So if this is how the numbers work out, I mean, I know September 4th is the cutoff. I've read that. So I'm fine with it as it's written, unless somebody else has a better idea.
Being done, I'll look for a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Looked a second. Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on this item, please call in at 386 223-1690. We'll close public comment. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Brancino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Mayor Holland? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.